Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started. Candidates will have three minutes to make opening remarks. And we'll start at this end with Maria.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much to our host, all of the sponsors of the forum, everyone here in attendance, and the viewing audience. My name is Maria Cecilia Isaac and I am respectfully requesting your vote to the Board of Education. Muy buenas noches a todos los televidentes que nos están escuchando. Mi nombre es Maria Cecilia Isaac. Muchas gracias a nuestro anfitrión, a todo el público aquí, y a todos los que patrocinaron este evento para este foro de candidatos. Busco ser elegida al Consejo Administrativo de la Junta Escolar de Kansas City, Kansas. This is the first time I'm running for political office. I am a state-certified court interpreter. I'm a mother of two and I am a business owner. I am a lifelong resident of Wyandotte County. My children attended Stony Point North. Both of them attended Arrowhead Middle School. My oldest is at Sumner Academy and the youngest will soon be there, hopefully. I don't have a lot of political experience. I have worked on some candidate campaigns, successful ones, and this is just a natural progression of everything that I've done, is serving my community, being a community volunteer. And I just hope to be able to serve the public in this capacity and represent a demographic that has not had representation for a very long time. Muchísimas gracias. Quiero ser la representante de todos, pero en especial a la comunidad hispana que no ha tenido un representante en el Consejo Administrativo. Jamás ha sido una hispana o hispano elegido a este puesto y quiero servir. Me dedico a servir a la comunidad. Mi padre siempre ha dicho: "Si nos vives para servir, nos sirves para vivir." My father's always said, "If you don't live to serve, you don't deserve to live," and I just want to be a public servant.
Thank you. Doctor?
Thank you, Merle, and good evening. And thank you for coming out this evening and also to the voters who will tune in later. My name is Valdenia Nguyen and I am a graduate of Washington High School, Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and the University of Kansas. I am asking for your vote on April 7th to become a member of the USD 500 School Board because I bring a variety of experiences and skills and knowledge to the position. I had the opportunity upon graduation from the University of Kansas 42 years ago to gain employment at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and I have been here ever since. So as a college professor, I know what it takes to be college and career-ready. And so one of my goals would be to continue the policies that emphasize, help our students to prepare themselves for this 21st and beyond century. For the last 15 years, I've had the privilege and honor to serve as the state legislator. Many of those years, I have been able to be the ranking Democrat on the House Education and Education Budget Committee. So I have been on the front lines fighting to protect funding for public schools. It's a bumpy road now, but, and it's not, you know, it's not unusual for people to serve on local boards and in the legislature. So I want to bring those skills home to help KCK advance. I also have had the opportunity to work hands-on with students and parents in after-school program. That was a big challenge because you had to gain the trust of both teachers that you work with, parents, and those students. So I bring those skills. So I'm asking for your vote because as experienced educator, as a leading policymaker, as a hands-on person, I can help design policies to provide quality education for KCK. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Brenda C. Jones. First, I'd like to apologize. I woke up yesterday with laryngitis, so I'm trying to get it together here. I am a proud doc, born and raised here in Wyandotte County. I attended, a proud graduate at USD 500 Schools, Douglas Elementary, Northeast Junior High School, and a proud graduate of the 1966 class of Sumner High School. I am a community volunteer. I have volunteered, I am a lifelong member of Girl Scouts, and I volunteered at Girl Scout Beyond Bars from 1993 to 2013. I am a lifelong member of the NAACP. I serve on the Executive Board there. I'm a member of the Metropolitan Baptist Church for 58 years, and I am presently the church clerk from 1978 until present. I served on the Board of Directors of Girl Scouts from 1996 to 2002. And I serve on the Board of United Way of Wyandotte County Board of Directors. I was there from 1990 to 95, and then again, 96 to 2009, and I presently serve there again. I serve on the Local Workforce Investment Board. And I have a love and desire to serve my community. This is where I was born and this is where I believe in giving back to my community. I love children and I have served on the Kansas City, Kansas Public School Board since 19, I'm sorry, since 2007. I ask your vote to continue to serve the 22,000 children that I represent, that I call my kids. Thank you.
Gloria?
Good evening, and thank you for those of you who are still here to attend. Very glad to see you here. My name is Gloria Willis, and I have been a member of the Kansas City, Kansas School District for 41 years. I have also been a member of the Kansas City, Kansas School Board for 20 years, and my aim is to continue to serve as a member of the Kansas City, Kansas School District. The Kansas City, Kansas School District has served this community for 170 years. I am very proud to be able to serve the community again and continue to do the fine things that we have done for those people who are part of the Kansas City, Kansas School District. Because the Kansas City, Kansas School District has for many years done much in education for our children, we want to continue to do that for our children. Our graduation rates continue, our dropout rates continue, and we continue to work with those children who don't do what we want them to do to be successful, but we're going to still provide for them. We have challenged many, many of our people who want to do what is right for the children in the Kansas City, Kansas School District. Because our finances are not what we want them to be, we still want to continue to do what is right for our children. We have really talked and tried to have our people in our district to understand that we will continue to help those people who need help in our district. We want our people to understand that we have access to the people in our district. You know, it really does surprise me that we have so many young people who have tried to do what we need to do to be successful with our young people. We have a program that is called Diploma Plus that we are doing for all of the children in our district, beginning with kindergarten through 12th grade, and we're going to continue to do that. So come April the 7th, if you don't have anything else to do on that day, and I hope you do have something, to come to the test, come to the test. Be sure you do what you need to do for the people in Kansas City, Kansas. Thank you very much.
Irene?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all that stayed tonight, as well as Business West and the Community College for holding the forum. You know, although it may seem to be so, my story really is by no means simple, but might sound familiar. I'm the youngest of nine children raised by parents who really wanted their children to get something more than they achieved. And the way to do that was by their means, through education. My mother didn't get past the eighth grade. My father had to drop out at 11th grade to provide for his family. You know, they valued education and stressed to us the importance. And with that investment in the push and the stressing, what they received from their nine kids was almost incredible. They received nine high school diplomas, seven graduate degrees, and five, seven undergraduate degrees and five graduate degrees. You know, this high value placed on education by the grandparents and has been passed on to my children. As a parent of three children currently in the school district, you know, they heard the message, the important message of not only graduating preschool all the way to college, but they, they really are pushed to understand that that's the important and that's their goal. Now, our goal as their parents and the children are very important, but we couldn't achieve that without also the parents, my family, and their friends to understand how this has to continue. So the reason that I'm running is I want to be part of a district that has every child achieve their own personal goal. So for the past 25 years, I've been in this community, working for agencies such as Youth Opportunities Unlimited, Catholic Charities of Northeast Kansas, as well as Swope House Services, and now I'm with El Centro, a nonprofit that currently serves Wyandotte and Johnson County. I bring experience and commitment. I am collaborative as well as respectful. So I understand the challenges that are facing our schools, as well as our children on both sides of the table. As an accomplished nonprofit executive who believes in collaboration and aiming to achieve measurable improvements in our student achievement, we have to close those student achievement gaps, as well as making sure that administrative accountability. So I understand leading an organization, as well as all my experience on being boards and holding that accountability. And as a parent, like all of you, the school funding is very much a concern. Thank you.
Janie?
Thank you, everybody, for coming to here tonight, and I hope you can hear me. My name's Janie Humphreys. I'm a candidate for the school board. My husband, Richard, and I moved here about 39 years ago, and we've chosen to stay. It's a home community. For over 42 years, I have been actively engaged with children in education. I've worked with students, parents, staff, and community members to support our students and their families. As a volunteer in our schools, I have served on many different school district community, school district committees, community committees, and the PTA on the state level. I believe every child deserves the opportunity to receive a quality education, regardless of where they live or which school they attend. Our children of today are going to be our leaders tomorrow. They need and deserve academic skills and the knowledge necessary to compete for jobs in our global economy. In 10 years, in 15 years, they're going to be making decisions that affect not only them, but you and me. We must provide them with a good quality education that will enable them to make well-informed decisions in the future. We have a very diverse community of students, over 22,000. They speak 65 different home languages. We have 30 elementary schools, eight middle, five high schools, and we provide preschool and Head Start services at over 20 different sites. In our school district, board members are elected at large to represent the entire community, not just one area or one school, in making decisions for the education of all of our students. Serving as a school board member involves more than attending two meetings a month. Members must be eager to learn and understand the details and the needs of our children and schools today and in the future. They must have the time to devote to being a good school board member. I have been regularly attending school board meetings for six years. I am aware of the many programs and strategies that are being put into place in our schools, the critical funding issues that we face. I have listened to presentations, read articles, books. I have asked questions and gotten answers. I have been in every one of our schools, and I have been in classrooms watching the teaching that is going on. I have the time, the interest, and the knowledge to be a well-informed board member, to attend meetings, trainings, and workshops, to visit the schools and attend community events. I will work with parents, students, community members, staff, and other board members to make the best possible decisions for our students.
George?
I apologize to the people that are here. This is probably, I don't know which side of me is good, maybe none of them, but because there are seven candidates and only six chairs, they chose that I am a thorn among roses, so I'm down here by myself. And I only can concur that it's because of the Y chromosome, the extra Y chromosome, that I sit down here. But I am the only gentleman in the race, and I want to thank you for inviting me here this evening. I've been on your Board of Education now for 32 years. Janet Wall, who's in the audience, who's our state board member, and I were elected at the same time. She's moved on to the State Board of Education, and I'm here. And the reason I'm here is because I love Kansas City, Kansas, and I love what goes on with students on a daily basis. I guess it's mandatory that I tell you I'm a fifth-generation doc. My great-great-grandfather's brother was the last mayor of Quandero, so we've been here for quite a while. I was educated in the public schools in Kansas City, Kansas, graduated from Washington High School, graduated from Donnelly College, and this will date me, graduated from Kansas State Teachers College in Emporia, Kansas. I'm a former president of the Board of Trustees at Donnelly College, former, former everything, it seems like, former president of Turner Bank, and former chairman of the board of the Cow Valley Bank. So I've had a lot of experience in finance. Maybe it's my turn to go to Topeka and see what's going on there because apparently there are a number of folks there who have no clue what's going on everywhere else. I want to, I want to say that, and the reason that I am, I am running again for the Board of Education is because we've made great strides in what's going on in our, in our community. Graduation rates are up, college credits are up. We, I met a girl the other day who's a senior at Wyandotte. She already has 35 credit hours, which makes her a sophomore in college. I applaud that, and we want that for every one of our students in Kansas City, Kansas, so they can take extra credit while they're in high school during summer. We want our kids to be, when they graduate, to be, have their first year of college done. It's not only something good for them, but it's a great savings in funding for their families, and I think that's what all our students deserve. Everything is not great in Kansas City, Kansas. Attendance is up, it's not where it should be. There are certain pockets of our community where the attendance needs to be better, and we can't just do that by telling kids they've got to be there. We need the moms and dads and aunts and uncles and grandmas and everybody to say, "Get your tail out of bed and get to that bus or get to that school, and you're going to be there." And that's, you know, they may struggle out of the house, miss breakfast, but they're going to get to school, and they're going to learn. They're going to learn because we have the best staff, I think, of any school district in this state, and maybe even in this country. I am just proud to have been there for all that time, and I hope that you will see fit to vote for me on April 7th. Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with the questions, and Linda Pendleton will ask the question. She is with the Armoredale Renewal Association, and we'll start with George.
Actually, I'd like to ask a first question of one particular candidate.
Go ahead.
Do that. Okay. Dr. Nguyen, just for clarification purposes, it's a question that's being asked throughout the community, so I'd like for you to clarify for our community how you will avoid a conflict of interest while serving as a state legislator, chair of the Education Committee, and member of the Board of Education, since funding from the state is voted, voted on and established by the legislature?
Well, first, if I were chair of the Education Committee, we wouldn't have these problems. But, thank you for the question, and that is important.
Yes.
Because, first checking with the Ethics Commission, Carol Williams, the fact that, again, I would not be a pioneer because from many districts like ours and unlike ours as well, Cedric County, our neighboring Johnson County, specifically Shawnee Mission, and I don't have to name the name because there was even one of the lawyers that represented all of the four Johnson County districts was a senator. And so it is clearly one legal, that's, that's the most important aspect. But again, there is not a conflict of interest, and that, the legislature is part-time. Remember, college is not K through 12, so our schedules are very flexible, and it would be something that would strengthen the, the board position, I believe, because as other neighboring communities who have those people serving in both places, I could bring that strength to, to our district, unlike, and we haven't had that opportunity before. So I think it's a very strong opportunity. So thank you for that question, because it needs to be explained. That is, it is a strength and a positive. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Now, if we could start with the questions and start with George.
Are you ready for this? Would you please explain how the recently approved block grants will solve the problem of school underfunding and what a block grant is?
First of all, it won't. The governor, in his wisdom, has decided that rather than the school finance formula, which has been there for, I think, over 20 years, he's decided that we should get block grants to all the schools in Kansas. And those block grants, the way I understand them, will be the equivalent in funds of what we're getting right now. So for the next two years, we get the exact same amount that we get right now. The problem is, if, Kansas City, Kansas District is a growing district. We have more students each year. If we grow students, that actually requires maybe more teachers, more thing. Too bad, there's no money with those students. In the past, when you got new students, money came along with that. So districts in Kansas who lose students won't be penalized by losing the students, they'll still have more money than they did. The governor has not signed it yet, but I believe he's going to. What's going to happen, I think, is that there's a three-judge panel in Shawnee County who is probably going to say, "Guess what, legislature? This is not going to work because we've already told you what needs to be done with schools." So for board members, that puts us in a flux because right now, we're trying to figure out our budget, and we have no idea. If the block grants go, and it happens, the last word I heard was that Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools can lose up to $9 million. Right now, with, with the block grants happen, we will be getting the same amount of money that we did from the state as we did in 2003. Imagine your budget with the same amount of money you have now that you did 12 years ago. Imagine how difficult that would be.
Okay.
Janie?
Yeah, Janie?
Yes, you're next. Same question.
George answered most of it. We're going to be in trouble. There's going to be a lot of hard decisions. One thing I want you to think about is that in 1997, the base student aid per pupil was $3,648. Do you know how much we got this year? We got $162 more. That's 18 years, and they're expecting us to do more with less. So it's, there's going to be a lot of hard decisions. The block grants are going to hurt us because we are a growing district, and we have a lot of weights that come on our, in addition to our basic student aid. We get what they call weights, extra credit, extra money for low-income students, for students who speak no English. And we have over 9,000 students in this district that are English-language learners. Many of them are coming in from refugee camps in Burma, from Thailand. These kids are expected within one year of being here to perform on all this testing, and that many of them do not know any English. So this is going to affect how we serve all of our students.
Irene?
I think what you're seeing in the state or at the Capitol is definitely a tack on public education, and this is definitely key. This is not, the block grant is not good for our district, and on the backs of our children, what you're seeing is, of course, a way to try to balance the state's budget and take away from our public education. So I think it was explained very well by Mr. Brydenthal, and what we need to do is to make sure that we continue to advocate, we look out to see what the, what the three panel judge, or the judges do, because we need to make sure that, that we stop and continue to find, not to just know what's going on in Kansas City, we need to make sure in Topeka that we are advocating for our students and to make sure that this does not happen. And if it does, as the panelists said, we are up for a tough decision-making.
Gloria?
You know, when I think about the block grant, I think about us being in a box, and it disturbs me because that box does close us in because it says to me that that block grant is going to give us a special amount of money, and with that special amount of money, we are to guarantee that we use that money for what is needed for those students who need block grant money to do what needs to be done for the students in the Kansas City, Kansas School District. I'm an advocate of public education. I know that we need to do things that will benefit the children in Kansas City, Kansas. So we have to talk about it, but we don't like it because we started off saying to the people who pay taxes that the block grant is going to benefit us, but the block grant is going to hurt some people who had to pay special taxes. So I don't like the block's grant, and I say ditto to the three people who have already spoken, and I'm going to say ditto to myself because the block grant reminds me of being put in a box.
Brenda?
After that, there's not much left to be said, but I too disagree with that because as our, as it already been stated, our enrollment continues to grow. The governor constantly says that our schools have received more money in recent years. That may be true, but technically only. It's been completely distorted because our Consumer Price Index has increased 22.9%. The enrollment has increased by 11.4% and continues to grow every day. Our at-risk head count is 23.2%, and the number of bilingual is 62.7%. True, we've seen more money, but we're needing it. Our at-risk kids will be at risk. Our at-risk kids will be at risk even more. They will be like forgotten. We have a Governor said that he is an educational Governor. If this is what he thinks educational is, he needs to go back and go to school to find out what education's about.
Doctor?
The block grant is the culmination of a group of representatives and senators who never could understand the school finance formula, so they were intent on destroying it. The courts, and they want to get into another court fight, which is insanity, because they have lost all the other, the school formula has been court-tested, but the block grant that he will sign will reduce the amount of money that comes to KCK. Remember, the extra funds that were provided were primarily for property tax relief, and so the numbers will increase for the next two years, but the increase in funds are going to be for capers, which you cannot use in the classroom. So, it's no extra funding for public education. So, these people do not tell the truth. The block grant is a coup, and it will last as long as you have those individuals in that position to maintain it. But, if he's not able to, excuse me, if the conservatives are not able to change the way that the Supreme Court has changed, then there is that last bastion of protecting, of the constitutionality of adequately funding. So, stay tuned.
It is sad, and it makes my stomach turn, that the legislators that said that they were going to protect our education and that wanted the best for Kansans are doing this to our students, the most vulnerable, the ones that can't defend themselves. We are here to defend them. The school board, I believe, has an obligation and a responsibility to fight back any way it can by encouraging our children to be civically active, to speak out, to march, to make phone calls, and demand that their representatives represent their interests. Shame on them, but shame on us if we don't do something about this and vote these people out.
Okay, let's start with Cecilia next and come this direction. Give us what you see as two priorities to accomplish, give us what you see as two priorities to accomplish during the upcoming four years if you are elected to office.
Thank you for this question. I've been told what the school board members are supposed to do, oversee budgets, hire the superintendent, evaluate the superintendent, set policy, and code of conduct. But, I'd like to go beyond that. I would like to be an ambassador for the school board to local businesses, our local government, and the parents in the community. I would like to be a bridge. Because of my purpose in life that I found late in life, much later after I graduated from KU as an interpreter, I am a conduit. I am a conduit of conversation. I build conversations, sometimes between patients and doctors, sometimes between attorneys and judges or court personnel. So, I feel that I should continue to be a conduit and allow everybody a place at the table to be able to advocate for their children, to be able to step up and fill the gaps if there are funds needed. I know a lot of business owners, as myself, would be happy to contribute in some way or another, either financially or by providing training to the students. So, that would be one of my priorities, and I think I ran out of time.
Thank you. I'll put it in the category of creating scholars by one, closing the achievement gap, which then means a lot as far as to make students able to learn transferable skills. And combined with that, increase, help make policies to increase college and career technical There's a lot out there, but I would want to engage the teachers, the administrators, and the students to see what careers that they have passion for. And then combine that with, of course, those that are proven. We don't want people getting degrees and they don't have a lot of job opportunities. But, the big category would be creating scholars by closing the achievement gap and then helping to expand those career and technical education programs.
Brenda?
I would like to continue what we have started, and I'm very much interested in seeing this to the end of our Diploma Plus. We implemented Diploma Plus with the kids that are in grade six right now, when they exit and graduate, they will at least have a high school diploma as well as one year of college completed, or a certificate, in a certified certificate or credential, and at least a 21 on the ACT test. My priority, I like, I'm already going to the schools, to the activities, and I'm out there so the kids can see that someone in the school board, that we care about our students and we care by being there for them to see what they're doing. My goal is to see that this continues, and it continues, starting today and on through the rest of the education of all the children here in Wyandotte County.
Gloria?
Would you repeat that question? I will. Give us what you see as two priorities to accomplish during the upcoming four years if you are re-elected.
Okay, all right. I'm going to start with what Brenda left off with, Diploma Plus. Diploma Plus is an excellent program for the students in the Kansas City, Kansas School District. And I feel that it is an extra, special program for our children, because it provides three things for our children. One year of college, if they complete the Diploma Plus program, it will provide an industry-recognized certificate or credentials in case there are young people who don't want to go to college, but want to get a decent job to take care of their families. And it will provide at least 21, at least a 21 on the ACT test. We need our children to go to college, because they need to learn what to do in case they do go to college, or what to do if they don't go to college and continue to get jobs to take care of their families. I think I'm finished. Oh, one minute, okay. Another thing I would like to see done is, this is going to be harsh, but I'm going to say it. I'd like to see our Governor decide that he doesn't want to be Governor anymore.
I think if elected, I think two priorities. Well, bottom line, the board is responsible for the student achievement, and I agree. Closing that gap, particularly within our minority population, our people of color, that is very important for me to be able to see. And I think the two things that I would like for us to take a look at, or I would like for us to achieve, and I would hope to lead the way, is number one, the parent involvement. It does take, and people mentioned it before, it definitely is going to take those that are close to their student to make sure that the achievement is met. And I would like to see how we can improve our PTAs, figure out ways to really get parents more involved, you know, just personally as well as within, as us as a school board. The other is utilizing, the board is also responsible for the oversight of our public and school libraries. And I would love for us to take a look at that resource that seems to be so important. Technology is leading the path. We also have those library resources that I think we definitely need to look at moving to the forefront.
Since I've been attending the school board meetings for six years, I've watched the progress towards the Diploma Plus program. It is an excellent program that reaches out to all of our students, and I'm a supporter of it, and I will be. The other thing that I would work on is parent involvement. We need to encourage our families to be more involved in the schools, but we have to realize that there's more than just the room mother of the past ways to be involved. Our students need to take ownership of their learning and realize that they have to learn, they have to retain it. What they learn in math class, they have to use in history class. They can't just isolate their learning. They have to realize they build on it every year. Every day you go to school, you use what you used the day before. And we need to make our children understand, they can own that. That is their gift, their freedom. And sometimes, parents are afraid to approach the school, because maybe they don't speak English, maybe they had bad school experiences. We need to show them that this is not 30 years ago. We have different people in our schools, we have different parents. There's so many ways to be involved, whether you're in the school physically, or you send your child to school, ready for school every day. Either way, that's parent involvement.
Thank you. George?
Excuse me. George?
Well, when I first got on the board, we'd ask students, are you going to college? They could say yes, no. That's changed over the years. It's now, where are you going to college? So, their attitudes and their thoughts are, we're going to college. We're going to either get a degree, or we're going to go through the Diploma Plus program, which will give them one year of college, or give them a credential in occupation certificate. And one of the things that I think we see a lot is, Sumner Academy, we all know about Sumner Academy and the great school it is, and I applaud the people at Sumner, but we need to have more AP, Advanced Placement classes in the other high schools, so that the young people who chose not to go to Sumner, or for some reason didn't qualify, there are a lot of smart kids in the other schools, I guarantee you that, they have, they need the opportunity to take advanced placement tests, so they can be successful in whatever they choose to do. Also, as was mentioned, the school district, it's unusual. We are also the board members for the public library. It's the only one in Kansas and one of a handful in the country. I don't know why it's that way, but it's that way, and it seems to work. I want to continue to provide the current technological services that we provided the library. We've got one mobile unit, and on the horizon is another mobile unit. I hope you get a chance to see it or visit it, because it's more than just a bus carrying books. There's a lot more going on in there. We have a new South Branch Library. Renovations are on the horizon for the Main and West Library. These are things that I think are crucial for not only the people in school, but for the whole community. And I think that's where the school board can make an inroad into the education of the community.
This will be the last question.
Okay.
And we'll start with George.
He wants to share the mic, of course. It would be of great benefit, it's felt in our community, for KCKPS teachers and administrators to live in the school district. Could you explain to us why that is not happening, and if you feel there's anything that can be done to encourage them to do so?
Well, years ago, when I first got on the board, Dr. Plucker was the superintendent, that's a long time ago. And he proposed to ask or demand that all employees of the district live in the district. Well, found out that that was impossible, because even though we employ them, they're employees of the state. It's a strange thing, but they get paid for money that comes from the state, so they are actually employees of the state of Kansas. And because of that, we cannot require them to live in the school district. I would like everybody who works in the school district to live here, so that when you go to the grocery store, you see your teachers. When you go, some kids don't want to do that, I understand, but those people are also part of your community, and they understand very well how your community operates, because they see community people every day. There are some new apartments, they're in Piper District or the Bomber District, I'm not sure, but as we get more housing for young people, and many of the teachers that come to the district are young people, they want to live in apartment complexes with a lot of other young people that have a clubhouse, and swimming pool, and all the kind of amenities. I don't know, other than encouraging them, when we hire them to live in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, I don't know that there's much else we can do.
We have 3,773 employees, and 42% of them do live in our Kansas City, Kansas. The one thing we also have to remember is, yes, we want them to live here, but we are a global society in a big metro area, and most of our teachers are part of a two-income family. And some of those spouses have residency requirements, just like the UGAs. So, we need to encourage them, yes. And we can do that by showing them positive things in our community. Our great, affordable housing, our wonderful kids, caring community. And some of the people are coming as a second career, they already have a house somewhere else. It can be very hard to just pick up your whole family and move. So, while I would love to have them all live here, I don't see any way we can require it, but we can certainly advocate for what a great community we are, and show them that, and welcome them to our community. Not say, why don't you live here? Say, hey, have you looked at any of the houses around here, the apartments? We have some great facilities, our new library, our mobile library, all the new things that are coming. Be positive in your message, and encourage them to come.
I think what used to be kind of the urban school district that students out of college had to come and practice, we really have to get out of that image, and the image of Wyandotte County is most definitely changing. We're all proud to live here, and we say that, born, raised, for most of the panel up here. And as far as the must, I think I agree with all of the statements in regard to encouraging them as a place to be, residents, resident to be, proud to be of, this county, as well as the opportunity to show our kids, it's okay to come, it's great to come back. I would say there are a lot of reasons why, besides the state regulation, they can live anywhere, a lot of reasons in the past, why they did not want to. As far as encouraging, I love to see our teachers in our grocery stores, I love to bump into our teachers in our churches, and a lot of that is changing, correct? But, again, I not only would love to see that happen, but we really do have to encourage and let people know the image, and how proud we are as a community to encourage our teachers to live here.
I came to the district many years ago, when it was required that if you worked in the Kansas City, Kansas School District, you lived in the Kansas City, Kansas School District. And gradually, that does not happen anymore, and I don't like it, because it does not happen anymore. But, I do understand that there are reasons why it does not happen, that everyone who is employed in the Kansas City, Kansas School District can and cannot live in Kansas City, Kansas for many, many reasons. So, we have to go with the flow and let those people live where they must live. But, I certainly enjoy going to Price Choppers, and I certainly enjoy going to the Hen House, I certainly now enjoy going to Legend, and seeing people who work in our district and live in our district. And I certainly enjoy those people who work in our district and drive some other place to live. But, it would just do my heart good to see them all, all of them, live in the Kansas City, Kansas School District, but I know it is not going to happen. So, I just wish for the best for our children.
Brenda?
Thank you. I could say ditto to all that. But, I always tell the first-year teachers every year when I talk to them, how as a child, when I was raised here in District 500, how good it was to go to a grocery store, the church, or see one of your teachers somewhere in the community. I told them how much we enjoyed it, to see some, say, there's our teacher, you know? You didn't have to wait to get to school. And I always impressed upon them that they could have that relationship too, not just in the classroom, but every day if they lived in the community. And like they said, we know they don't have to, and it's not required, but it would really be wonderful to know that. So, ditto on everybody. Thank you.
Doctor?
Thank you. While we may not be able to require them to live, there have been incentives used in the past to do more than encourage. We could go back and revisit, for example, the first home, first-time homebuyer options. And that comes under local control, so the school district couldn't do it by itself. It'd have to work in cooperation with our unified government. But also, Kansas City, Kansas is not the only district that has this concern. And so, as the lady said, it's my understanding, about 50% of the teachers, but upwards maybe 70 or 80% of the staff. So, we have a lot of people who buy into our community, who live- So we have a lot of people who buy into our community, who live in our community, who have ownership. But again, establishing those relationships with those teachers, saying, you know, this is your job, this is your community, and getting, again, the parent engaged, the student engaged, the teacher engaged, more than just in the classroom, could contribute to the decision of maybe spending more time in your neighborhood district. But still, laser version, look, see what other cities are doing. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but revisit those incentives, those real tangible incentives like lower property taxes, if not, but just 10 years, buying your first-time house. Because many of our, let's say, we want to capture and keep the newer teachers, within that first five years, they may leave. That's where the numbers are. But still, there are ways to incentivize the teachers to, as well as staff and administrators to live in the district. Thank you.
Someone that understands economics and finance better than me mentioned this a while ago, the incentives. I completely agree with Representative Winn, that we have the first-time buyer programs. I believe it's 95% off of your property taxes for five years, something like that. Why can't it be 20 to 25% reduction in property taxes for 20 to 25 years? Why can't we give discounts at our local businesses to our educators? I know some supply stores give a lifetime discount for purchases to educators that provide their degree or some card that says that they are a member of the National Education Association, or that can prove that they are teachers. Also, perhaps we can keep our teachers, if they have requirements, like it was brought up, sometimes their spouses may have to live in another county or another city. Maybe we can keep them here longer and engage in some of the community events and collaborate with some of the organizations, and maybe do evening classes or extended hours with our children. Something to make them come and grow to love us even more. It's very discouraging me. It upsets me when people disrespect Wyandotte County. I'm proud to live here, to raise my family here, and I work and play here.
Yeah, we will have closing remarks, and candidates will have two minutes, and we'll start with Maria.
You remind me of when I entered school and they ask you, what is your first name, little girl? Maria. My mother named me Maria Cecilia. She always called me Cecilia. My family all knows me as Cecilia. But in school, the people that I went to school with know me as Maria. But it's Maria Cecilia for the Latino community, Cecilia. I know it's a little confusing, but I think that we do that to other children also. We give them a name that might not be the one that they've grown up with and they're more comfortable with, the family name. So please call me Cecilia. I, once again, I think that we have a responsibility to all of the students and even the graduates of USD 500. We need to be there, a safety net for them, even beyond them graduating maybe for five years, to be able to assist them to find their career path if they haven't found it within the 12 years that they've been in our schools, and assist them with career planning and other choices, work opportunities. We have so much to give, and I don't think that we're using our resources to their fullest ability. And I ask for your vote on April 7th. For you early voters, it starts Saturday, March the 28th. Please vote for Maria Cecilia Isaac. Mi nombre es Maria Cecilia Isaac, pido su voto. Puede comenzar a votar el 28 de marzo, sábado 28 de marzo, en las oficinas de elecciones que se ubican en la 9 y la avenida State Avenue. Este, o también si se gusta esperar hasta el 7 de abril, pido su voto. Muchas gracias.
Doctor?
Thank you, Meryl. Thank you to the organizers, and thank you all for coming out this evening. I asked for your vote on April 7th because I am experienced. I have the leadership capabilities. I have the commitment to education, proven by maintaining my position for 42 years of teaching. I have a passion for education, and I have the time and energy to do the job. My goals include closing the achievement gap, creating scholars, improving on our graduation rates, and making our students competitive. It's time that members of this board, when I'm, if I have the opportunity to get your vote and support, but to join together, help them, help us all design policies that truly provide quality education, no matter what hand we're dealt in the funding category. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and I hope your vote.
Brenda?
Thank you. I again like to thank everyone that sponsored this forum tonight. And again, I apologize for my voice, but I would like to ask for your vote to reelect me on April the 7th so I continue to do the work for my 22,000 kids here in Wyandotte County and the community. Thank you.
We are serving 22,000 children in the Kansas City, Kansas School District, and I know what a school board is supposed to do. Establish the vision for the district, set the goals, establish the policies for the school system, hire and evaluate the superintendent of schools, hold the superintendent accountable for accomplishing district goals, and help build and support public education. Public education is important because it educates all children.
Irene?
I have been thinking about running for school board for a long time now. I've always had excuses, children young. My children are now all three at Sumner Academy. And I know the challenges that the district are going to be facing in the coming years. And when I commit to something, I commit my all. And I've shown that in my experience and my community service in this county and community in a collaborative way as well as a respectful way. The district currently, of those 22,000 kids, 45% are of the Latino population. Our board really does need to look at representing our community. And I don't want to be just a voice of the Latino community. I respect this community enough to serve all 22,000 children. And with your vote, what I'd like to do is to claim a seat at this table. So Irene Gaudillo, vote April 7th. Thank you.
Janie?
We must remember that we, the parents in the community, we are the first teachers of our children. And the U in USD 500 stands for Unified. The entire community, all of us, must work together on behalf of all of our children. I gave very careful consideration to my decision to run for a position on the board. It was not made lightly. I thought long and hard, and I came to meetings so I knew exactly what I was getting into. When I, like Irene, when I commit, I do it wholeheartedly, as evidenced by the very nice South Branch Library. I was very lucky to be on the fundraising committee for that library. We raised $2 million in two and a half years during a recession. So when I commit, I'm there. As I said, I attend the board meetings regularly. I know the challenges we face. I have observed the work of board members. I know I have the time and the ability and the knowledge to be a good school board member and represent all of our kids in all of our schools. I'm asking for your vote on April 7th. And there are one more thing I want to say. We have two more days left in spring break. Hopefully, it won't be all cloudy. When you see those kids out on the street or in the store, say hi to them, smile. Ask them how it's going. They need to know that we, as older people, love them and value them and think they are worth it. Thank you for coming tonight.
George?
I want to thank every one of you for inviting us all here tonight, getting us out of the rain and bringing us in where it's nice and warm. I do need to mention one thing about the property tax incentives that were mentioned. Part of the property tax that's given up in that is the school district, so in order for us to do that, we lose money. That's how that works, as well as the community college and the community itself. I want to say, I think that all candidates here care about children. What defines the best candidates for the school board are experience on the school board and a strong record of working in our schools and taking a lead role in securing funding. Thank you, Janie, for the new South Branch Library. I know each one of you has a vote, and I appreciate that, but more than representation, I represent the 22,000 people who are in our district who don't have a vote. I hope I get their support. That's what I really, is most important to me. I thank you very much, and I ask for your vote on April 7th or before, if you have that inclination. Again, George Bridenthal, thank you.
Let's give the candidates a hand.